Alderman Toman is excused. Alderman Gale?
Here.
Kuzakowski?
Here.
At this time, I'd like everybody to rise for Pledge of Allegiance. And with us tonight, we're lucky enough to have Troop 321 here. So if you boys would please lead us in the pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, boys. That will get us to the approval of minutes of 12:21, practically a month ago. So if everybody, please take a look. You're satisfied, and there's no discussion, questions, omissions, or errors? Motion, please.
Kuzakowski make a motion to approve the minutes of December 21, 2021. Oracle, second.
Call.
Alderman Lorik?
Hi.
Dukneak?
I'm stating.
Gale?
Hi.
Kuzakowski?
Hi.
Kirkowski?
Hi.
And item four is a public hearing, and it's in consideration of a conditional use permit for All-Star Buick, for an amendment to an existing conditional use permit to include the property at the address of 7070 South 27th. Catherine, if you'd please read that officially into the record.
Certainly. Public hearing number one is to consider requests submitted by Timothy Grayman, All-Star Buick GMC, for an amendment to the existing conditional use permit to include the property with a former address of 7070 South 27th Street. Applicant is Timothy Grayman, All-Star Buick GMC. Property owner is Boyland Properties Oak Creek LLC. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is December 1, 2021.
Thank you, Catherine. Doug?
Thank you. Good evening. I am Doug Seymour. I'm the Director of Community Development for the city of Oak Creek. And this is a public hearing on a request for an amendment to the conditional use permit for All-Star Buick GMC for the property at the former address of 7070 South 27th Street. Back in April of 2018, the conditional use permit was issued for this property for an automotive dealership. And at that point in time, the land, which was right in the corner, which was a remnant piece of right-of-way that was acquired by the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for the 27th and Nunn Ross and intersection improvements. And during that process, when the Plan Commission was reviewing the site plan for All-Star, it was always the intent that they would potentially acquire that from the state as it had no access rights. And it was really the only one who could potentially use that would be All-Star. However, just given the way zoning works, I mean, that property was not part of the conditional use permit. And as such, now that All-Star is incorporating that into their parking lot, their display, and their dealership, it was necessary to revise that conditional use permit to incorporate that corner such that now, if approved, the entire All-Star Buick GMC property would be covered by that conditional use permit. This is a public hearing. If there's any questions or comments regarding the proposed amendment to this conditional use, to please approach the microphone. I'll give your name and address. And once we're recognized by the mayor, proceed to give your question or comment. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. And as Doug said, this will be the first call on the public hearing. Second call, anybody wishing to speak, please approach podium. Please give your name and address. Third and final call, anybody wishing to speak. We will now close the public hearing and go on to item five, which is consideration of the ordinance approving that conditional use permit to add the land at the former address of 7070 South 27th Street. So, open it up to council. Questions, comments? Steve?
Mayor, I think we all knew this was coming because he wanted something to be done at that corner. And just for what it's worth, went by there today, and they got some very nice vehicles. It's all done. It looks pretty sweet.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nothing? No, it is a vast improvement to the corner. Do want to thank planning. We had to work through some issues, as well as the applicant. Things like that are never easy to get through, and this fall, had to kind of move it through. But it does look very good. And again, the dealership's been a great addition to our city. We do appreciate you guys. So if there's no further questions or comments, motion, please.
Merk moves to adopt ordinance 3027, an ordinance to approve a conditional use permit amendment to adding the land with a former address of 7070 South 27th Street.
Dukneak, second. Call.
Alderman Dukneak. Gale?
Hi.
Kuzakowski?
Hi.
Kirkowski?
Hi.
Lorik?
Hi.
Item six is new business, and it's consideration of a resolution approving a major incident response team memorandum of understanding. At this time, I'll invite Chief Stecker up to brief us on that.
Welcome, chief. Good evening. Chief Stecker, Oak Creek Police Department. A very quick brief on the major incident response team, we call it MERK, is to get the memorandum of understanding together, and that would allow us to provide mutual aid assistance between all the Milwaukee County Law Enforcement Agency groups, which was MCLIA. So it's all the Milwaukee County groups. One of the things that I did want to address on here is that we do have the SMART team, which some of you may have heard, which is a Spurbin Mutual Assistance Response Team. One of the key things is that with the SMART response, we get one vehicle and one officer per level, but it specifically states in the SMART response that it's not for crowd control items. So with the civil unrest that we had over the last couple of years, and we need to look at different responses, we need to have specialized teams to do this. However, the most agencies don't have the bodies, they have a dedicated team for this. But what we can do is pull together resources and use it as a force multiplier. And that's where the MERK comes into it. It's a different part of that. And right now, Oak Creek is the only agency that has not agreed to sign on, and we were waiting to get that reviewed legally, and that all came back on the positive side. So I'm here for any of your questions beyond that.
Questions for Chief Stecker? Not seeing any.
All right. You let me off easy?
Got it. Got off easy on your first appearance.
You spent some money, it won't be a different story, right?
Depends who you're talking to.
Motion on six, please.
Gale, move to approve Resolution 12296-011822, approving the major incident response team memorandum of understanding.
Kuzakowski, second. Call.
Alderman Gale?
Hi.
Kuzakowski?
Hi.
Kirkowski?
Hi.
Lorik?
Hi.
Dukneak?
Hi.
Under community development, item seven is consideration of a resolution approving a certified survey map submitted by NF3DK LLC for the properties at 8751 and 8775 South Howell. Doug, you got this one?
Absolutely. This certified survey map is actually classified as a minor land revision in the sense that it's not creating parcels, it's taking two parcels and combining them into one. And this CSM is being done in anticipation of a retail development that has actually has been approved now by the Plan Commission for this site. And as such, we can't really have a lot of lines going down the middle of buildings, so it was necessary to do this certified survey map. But not a lot's been created. Plan Commission has reviewed this, and they have recommended their approval. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Doug concerning the land merger, the CSM? Nope, seeing none. Okay. Motion then, please, on seven.
Kuzakowski makes a motion at the common council to adopt Resolution Number 12297-011822, a resolution approving certified survey maps submitted by NF3DK LLC for the properties at 8751 and 8775 South Howell Avenue.
Oracle, second. Call.
Alderman Kuzakowski?
Hi.
Kirkowski?
Hi.
Lorik?
Hi.
Dukneak?
Hi.
Gale?
Hi.
And item eight is consideration of a motion to approve and amend the pavilion and shelter rental policy and athletic field rental policy as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Commission. And with us is Lori Miller.
Hey, good evening, everyone. The Parks and Recreation Commission adopted this community public facilities use rental policy back in 2010, which is in Exhibit 1. Steph identified the need to split this policy into two separate policies, just given to the nuances between the two different rental types. There were several language changes made from this original policy that I'd like to just take a quick moment to highlight. The rental permitting process, rental fees, cancellation policy fees, were all kept on individual policies before, and so we're putting it all into this one policy just to increase transparency. The rental permitting process, which was previously done and a first come-for serve basis, has now become, regardless of the residency status, will not prioritize renting to just residents over the non-residents. Other minor changes to these policies include the addition of statements to alert renters that regardless of donations to the city, that doesn't affect your rental priority, that all renters have to adhere to city ordinances and rules governing the parks, and that those consequences for damaging the fields and rental facilities. Changes specific to the athletic field rental policy include placing an initial limit to the number of rentals per renter and the addition of language to address capacity issues at Abundshine and Shepherd Hills Ball Diamonds. Previously, applicants participate in a lottery system where the applicant could submit as many field rental dates as they'd like. If they were first picked in that lottery, they got all the dates. And then after that, the second lottery person would get any remaining dates that were left over, and so on. We're going to be removing that. So the second, the new policy is still a lottery system. However, the renter is initially limited to six rental date requests. And then once all Oak Creek residents have been given their allotted six dates, the calendar will open back up for those Oak Creek residents to come back and request additional dates. After that is done, then we open it up to non-residents to go and pick dates. When it comes to Abundshine and Shepherd Hills Ball Diamonds, these are the only two locations available in our city to play baseball games at. Historically, these two parks, along with all neighborhood park baseball fields, were also available for rent for practices. The new policy will ensure that these two fields will only be available for rental of games, and this will allow more games to be played at these two parks. At the December 16 meeting, Parks Commission passed a motion to recommend this to common council. And if there's any questions about this policy, I'd open up the floor.
And maybe just to preface the discussion, there is a separate policy that's being currently discussed by the Parks and Recreation Commission with respect to how our neighborhood parks are treated for baseball, specifically league practices, and we're not doing it anymore?
It's not just for baseball. So what we are still entertaining is opening up neighborhood parks regardless of what type of athletic field, opening it up, specific ones up for games.
Oh, yeah, my apologies.
So it would not just be a baseball thing. We do have a request for soccer games to be played at our neighborhood parks, basketball games, et cetera.
And we understand that there may be a larger discussion that's going to take place. I just wanted to focus the council's discussion this evening on the policy changes that are before you, recognizing that there's additional discussion taking place at the commission level regarding neighborhood parks that are used for those types of soccer or any type of organized sports facility.
Rich?
Alderman Dukneak, third district. And Lori, Alderman Kirkowski and I were at that meeting on the 16th, and really at the request of a lot of people in the community that just, you know, wanted some consideration given to that, the language policy, yeah, the language change of the previous rental This addresses this, correct? I remember, or I recall, the previous policy said that there could be no organized baseball league or tournament activity at any park. Is that correct?
That language in this policy still exists because the Parks Commission have not yet recommended that be changed. We are privately seeking out Alderman to approve their parks in their district to allow for those games. I have yet to get a positive response yet, but I am still in the process of reaching out and having those conversations. Once we find an Alderman that would like to allow for those games to occur in their specific parks, then we will go back and update that policy language. This is really just a precursor to that. Then at the end of the day, that would be the only section of that policy that would be changed.
Wouldn't you say that the change in the policy language is the first step that you have to take in order for activity to be, you know, organized activity to take place?
100%. And we're really hoping that with any of the changes that I presented with you today, that will provide a good environment that if they do choose to go in that direction, it will still keep it open for our residents to be able to use and not get pushed out by non-residents.
And will that be discussed at one of your upcoming meetings?
Yes, I would really like to. We still are working on getting Alderman to agree to allow one of their neighborhood parks to be used in that manner.
Another one of the issues that was brought up was being able to increase capacity in our park system by making other parks available for league play. So can you define neighborhood park? Is that different from, let's say, Cedar Hills, Meadowview, Carrollton, which are parks that are part of a school?
Absolutely. So Abundshine Park is our community park. It has many amenities in it that support a higher level of use. So they've got a parking lot, bathrooms. With Shepherd Hills, they have lighting. That type of amenity supports that higher level use, whereas our neighborhood parks are immediately adjacent to homes. If you kick a ball, you know, kick a ball out, it's likely to land in somebody's backyard. Those facilities don't have bathrooms, parking lots. They don't really have a lot of garbage receptacles, things of that nature.
Okay.
So that's really the difference, and that's why historically, our national park standards really encourage those games to be played at a community-level park instead of a neighborhood level park.
If I may, just maybe a more direct answer, of those that you mentioned, those are all neighborhood parks regardless of whether it's a school, you know, it's adjacent to a school or just a city park. So the only community parks that the city has are Lake Vista Park, Nob and Shine Park.
So as the writing of these policies currently stands, those wouldn't be considered for any type of organized use?
And again, that's something that the commission will be discussing at a subsequent meeting.
So that's, it's not a dead deal or done?
No, 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 not at all.
Because there'll be a lot of blowback.
I think the, I just, I think to draw back to the conversation, and the goal for these policy changes are, we know that that's a longer discussion that needs to be more thoroughly vetted, and they didn't want to have the old standard of how you were to rent or otherwise have our old lottery system in place when we opened that up this year.
Okay.
So I think that's what, really what we're attempting to do is get these good policy changes in place such that we're not scrambling around with things we know were inefficient or unfair for another year while we're having that larger conversation.
And I guess just so that I and maybe other members of the council are able to understand that, you know, the discussion doesn't end with tonight, that there is still a lot more work ahead. Okay, great. That's, I think that's all I had for right now.
Steve?
Thank you. I, yes, I was at that meeting also, and I know the goal is to try and have more teams take advantage of at least Shepherd Hills and Abundshine. So I think it's a good idea to limit those only to games, and then the practices can, you know, literally go elsewhere to a neighborhood park and within practice if they want to. But I just want to point out in Exhibit 2, I know the first sentence in the underneath Oak Creek Athletic Field Rental Policy, it does mention any sport field, and then it mentions all these other sports. But the document itself is pretty heavy on baseball and softball. So I really think sports fields include soccer, cricket, volleyball. I really think baseball and softball need to be added into that sentence because when you flip the page, all you're doing is talking about baseball and softball. So I think if you add that in there, it'd be fine. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none. No, and you're right, Rich. I mean, I know we're a very emphasized community on baseball. It's always been that way. Keep in mind, when I was an Alderman, there was a push at one time to add football at Cedar Hills. We do football as well. And you're right, there is blowback, and you're thinking it's coming from the baseball community. Just wait till you get to the neighborhoods and some of these neighborhood parks, when parking becomes an issue, not only during baseball season, but then goes on to football, and you have traffic problems that exist there. The neighbors are greatly affected by this. This really has to be looked at at a deeper level, and that's what Park and Recs are going to do. So there is two sides to it. And that's, as Lori pointed out, that's why they're pushed to places such as Lake Vista and Abundshine and Cedar Hills as well. So leave it at that. So there's no further discussion. Motion on eight.
Dukneak moved to approve amended pavilion and shelter rental policy and athletic field rental policy as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Oracle, second. Call.
Alderman Kirkowski?
Hi.
Lorik?
Hi.
Dukneak?
Hi.
Gale?
Hi.
Kuzakowski?
Hi.
And item nine is engineering and its consideration of a resolution approving the Oaks at 8100 Development Agreement with Decker Properties for the design and construction of the public improvements for the developments located at 8100 and 8146 South 27th Street and 8100 South Orchard Way. And with us is Matt, your debut as well.
Yes. Dean, council and mayor, before you, for consideration as a resolution for the development agreement for the Oaks at 8100, within this, the development agreement kind of hits some high points for you. It kind of covers the requirements and obligations for the developer to install all public improvements. That includes South Orchard Way, water main, sanitary sewer, improvements along 27th Street that are required by West End. Within that, stormwater management and any other obligations as far as payment of fees for inspection by city staff. Any questions? I'm more than happy to answer it, Mr. Short, of it.
Any questions for Matt? Greg?
Just one quick question. I've been getting a few calls about a different development, but in that area still, about construction vehicles coming down from, I guess it'd be south of there and up Orchard Way. With this development and them putting in the public improvements in the road, is there any, I guess, verbiage to direct them to use the new road right off of 27th Street for construction vehicles? Or will they still be coming up down Honeydale and up Orchard Way?
Not within the development agreement. As we review the plans, what we can do is we can force them towards 27th Street, basically creating the paths that they enter and come off of, and kind of push that traffic to it through our review. We have yet to review the plans or the specifications for the project. We are currently doing that right now, so that would be one of the items we can add to it.
Thank you. And just one question. We are going to put that cul-de-sac in, in Orchard Way?
That's correct.
Will we put the water mains and sewers, will they extend up into that cul-de-sac in case we ever extend it?
Yes, they do extend up there with terminating and hydrants, and they also loop out along that private road to 27th Street.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Seeing none, motion?
Merk moves to adopt Resolution Number 12295-011822, approving the Oaks at 8100 Development Agreement with Decker Properties, Inc. for the design and construction of public improvements for the development located at 8100 and 8146 South 27th Street and 8100 South Orchard Way.
Dukneak, second. Call.
Alderman Lorik?
Hi.
Dukneak?
Hi.
Gale?
Hi.
Kuzakowski?
Hi.
Kirkowski?
Hi.
And item 10 is public works and utility and its consideration of a resolution approving municipal water main and utility easement at Lake Shore Commons. Who's got that one? Matt?
I guess I'll take it. So before you is the resolution for municipal water main and easement. Basically, this covers the new easements out at Lake Shore Commons. I believe this is for the path area along the existing park. This would allow us to do maintenance and such along that park path if ever needed. Do you have any questions?
Questions from Matt? These are obviously essential agreements that are needed by the city for future maintenance and improvements. Okay. Seeing none, motion on 10.
Gale, move to approve Resolution 12292-011822, approving a municipal water main and utility easement at Lake Shore Commons.
Kuzakowski, second. Call.
Alderman Dukneak?
Hi.
Gale?
Hi.
Kuzakowski?
Hi.
Kirkowski?
Hi.
Lorik?
Hi.
And item 11 is consideration of a resolution approving a 10-foot municipal maintenance easement at Lake Shore Commons. Matt, you want to just brief us on that one?
I believe I made a mistake. I'm sorry. I did, I, yeah.
Oh, was that the other one?
Yeah. So this one actually covers the path. The one prior covered utilities throughout the entire development.
Oh, once again.
Yeah, once again, this is required easements throughout the development to allow us to do maintenance, whether it be on a path or water main or sanitary sewer.
Essential stuff in all our developments, really. Questions? Seeing none, motion on 11.
Gale, move to approve Resolution 12293-011822, approving a 10-foot municipal maintenance easement at Lake Shore Commons.
Kuzakowski, second. Call.
Alderman Gale?
Hi.
Kuzakowski?
Hi.
Kirkowski?
Hi.
Lorik?
Hi.
Dukneak?
Hi.
And item 12 is also a consideration of a resolution approving the municipal utility easement at Lake Shore Commons.
This is another easement through Lake Shore Commons that covers required areas that we need to maintain.
Questions, comments? Okay. Motion, please.
Gale, move to approve Resolution 12294-011822, approving the municipal utility easement at Lake Shore Commons.
Kuzakowski, second. Call.
Alderman Kuzakowski?
Hi.
Kirkowski?
Hi.
Lorik?
Hi.
Dukneak?
Hi.
Gale?
Hi.
And item 13 is the License Committee will ask Alderman Kirkowski to take that, please. Thank you, mayor. I trust everybody's had an opportunity to review the items on the common council report for tonight's meeting. Does anybody have any questions, cares, or concerns? Seeing none, Kirkowski make a motion to grant the various license requests as listed on the January 18, 2022 License Committee Report. Second, call.
Alderman Kirkowski?
Hi.
Lorik?
Hi.
Dukneak?
Hi.
Gale?
Hi.
Kuzakowski?
Hi.
And item 14 and 15 are the vendor summaries. We will take them separately. And item 14 is consideration of a motion to approve the December 29, 2021 Vendor Summary Report in a total of $348,733.15. Of this total, $298,192.48 will impact the 2021 physical year, with the remaining $50,149,067 impacting '22. And for their explanation, I'm sure Max can give it to us. But if there's any questions, please direct them. Feel free to speak up, and we'll get them answered. Any questions, concerns? When you are ready, motion on 14.
We'll move to approve the December 29, 2021 Vendor Summary Report in the total amount of $348,733.15, and other details noted.
Kuzakowski, second. Call.
Alderman Lorik?
Hi.
Dukneak?
Hi.
Gale?
Hi.
Kuzakowski?
Hi.
Kirkowski?
Hi.
And item 15 is consideration of a motion to approve the January 12, 2022 Vendor Summary Report in a total of $799,249.15. Of this total, $417,768.32 will impact the physical year 2021, with remaining $381,525.83 impacting 2022. and thirty-two cents will impact the physical year two thousand and twenty-one with the remaining three hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighty-three cents impacting two thousand and twenty-two. So, please take a look and when you're satisfied, there's no questions, comments, concerns, Questions, comments? Okay, hearing none, motion.
Gail, move to approve the January twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two vendor summary report in the total amount of seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifteen cents, with other detail as noted.
Guzakowski second. Roll call.
Alderman Dubnyak?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
And item sixteen is consideration of a motion to convene and to close session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, section nineteen point eight five, to discuss the following. A, section nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent eight, to consider a tax increment district number twelve finance development agreement with Walden OC LLC for the properties located at eighteen eighty, nineteen ninety-seven, and nineteen ninety-eight West Creekside Crossing. Does anyone?
Thank you, Mayor. Gail, move to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five, to discuss the following. A, section nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub B, to consider a tax incremental district number twelve finance development agreement with Walden OC LLC for the properties located at eighteen eighty, nineteen ninety-seven, and nineteen ninety-eight West Creekside Crossing Circle.
Guzakowski second. Roll call.
Alderman Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dubnyak?
Aye.
Okay. We will now convene in closed session and resume at its conclusion. Guzakowski second. Roll call.
Alderman Guzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dubnyak?[1733.63]